It is now 7:30.
Sorry.
I'd like to call the village board meeting to order and start it with a pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I actually have a public hearing this evening. I should have looked at my... Could we, the village clerk, give us the, read the blah, blah, blah? Proposed law to amend section 324, the proof of publication, do we need that?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to section 7-706 of the village law of the state of New York and pursuant to a resolution of the village board of the village of Baldenville adopted September 1st, 2022, a public hearing will be held by the village board of the village of Baldenville at Village Hall 16 West Genesee Street, Baldenville, New York, 13027, on the 15th day of September 2022 at 7:30 PM to consider a proposed local law to amend section 324-14 of the village code to reduce the speed limit on River Street from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party at the office of the village clerk. At the time and place of the hearing, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard by order of the village board of the village of Baldenville dated September 1st, 2022, Baldenville, New York.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal?
I have an email from the resident who brought up the issue. She cannot make the meeting tonight because she has childcare issues. I can give you a couple of questions that she had. She is for it, obviously. She was disappointed, it was only 25, lord, 25, I explained to her that was all the state allowed. She wants to know whether there'll be signs posted with the new speed limit. Wonder if anybody from the board has driven down that street to see how narrow it is and what can be done regarding the consistent daily drivers who go the wrong way down River Street. But she is definitely for it and very much appreciates that we have addressed the issue of speed and she'll be happy to hear we discussed it. That's all.
Is anyone speaking against the proposal?
So, did you say you wanted to speak or?
No.
Okay.
I was just saying they don't want to speak against it.
Sorry, I thought you raised your hand before. Okay.
Hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the regular meeting of the village board. Could I have a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from September 1st of 2022?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Additions, modifications, changes? Hearing none. Can I vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We've now moved to Sally's portion of the agenda. It's now time for public comment. And you have nothing. Okay.
Just hanging out.
And there is no one else? I don't know if the cameras picked up. Scanning the audience, you'll find that Sally is our visitor tonight. Trustees' comments. We'll go with Eric.
I'll stick to the agenda tonight, thank you. Agenda, thanks.
I need to add an item to the agenda. It is a motion authorizing the deputy mayor and the chief of police to sign letters of support for the New York State Liquor Authority to issue a waiver of the liquor license requirement for Paper Mill Island to allow more than four events at that venue within the 2022 year, which will allow the Taste of Beville event to serve alcohol on September 17.
Okay, thank you. If that's item E, we will come back to you at that point in time to do it again. I'm going to stick to the agenda. Goes to you.
Okay. Just wanted to do a save the date for the tree lighting and parade of lights that will be November 26th, which is the traditional Saturday after Thanksgiving. And it's also Small Business Day, too. That's it. Over to you.
I actually, I was reading Syracuse.com and I noticed something that was pretty interesting. The Baldenville marching band director, Casey Vanderstall, has been honored to join a group of other band directors from across the country in the 2023 Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade as a part of the Saluting America's Band Directors Program. This is the director that directed the marching band that marched in the 2020 Rose Bowl a couple of years ago. So, it's kind of pretty cool that a small village like us, it's a pretty substantial marching band marching in these big national parades and stuff like that. So, and the marching band home show is September 24th. And oh, yeah, and he also marched in the 2014 Macy's Day Thanksgiving Parade, too. So.
Dig it, yeah.
Not diggity. Good for us.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Just a couple of quick things, just to remind people, you're in Taste of Baldenville this Saturday from 12 to 10 at Paper Mill Island. All the best food you'll ever want to get from all the restaurants in Baldenville. The village is accepting applications for the position of deputy clerk. Call Village Office if you are interested and want to know what the requirements are and that type of thing. I wanted to mention that the issue with the stoplight on Downer Street, I'd like to make sure we discuss that tonight so that people that always assume it's our stoplight because it's in the village. We can explain to them a little bit about what's going on. Maybe when it's Greg's turn to speak, he can update us on what's going on. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you. We will move on to department heads and start with our attorney.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. When the village clerk's done writing, we'll go to her.
I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Ruth, you always have something.
I always have something. I want to inform the board that the Canton Woods 501(c)(3) board voted to and did pay to the village of Baldenville an amount to cover the 2021 budget deficit of $6,565.50. So, that was, they chose to do that and that has been delivered here to the village. We had our first golf tournament on Monday. It didn't rain, hallelujah, and it went very well. So, I want to give a shout out to the committee that made that happen and to all the community for the tremendous support they brought into us. And then this Saturday, September 17th, 9:00 AM is our Walk for the Woods. That is also a rain or shine event. 9 o'clock, we just walk up towards McCary Town, around towards the rest of the campus of what we used to call Syracuse Home and back down to the senior center. It's just about a two-mile walk. Come and join us. It's a fun morning. And then, thirdly, we're doing our first flu shot clinic. And if folks would let people know who are over 60, that the clinic is going to offer the flu shot, the senior flu shot, the most recent COVID booster, which will be the Pfizer booster available, and also shingles and pneumonia, if that's something you need. So, that's Monday, 9 to 12. So, let people know that that's available to them. We want them to come out and take care of all those immunizations.
Ruth, can somebody get all of those at one time or they got us?
So, what I would say is if you're considering getting more than two, I would speak to your primary care provider and/or your pharmacist to say what they recommend for you. I know most people are given information that says it's okay to get the COVID booster and your flu shot at the same time. But I think if you have any question about that, it's always best to bring that to your primary care and they can say specifically for you what's the best plan. But I really encourage you people to come out and take care of what they need to take care of.
I think Sally has a question for you.
No, it's just, I was told by a couple of pharmacies and my doctor that if you get the shingles vaccine, you should only get the shingles vaccine, just as a heads up. It's not, it doesn't play well with others.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Moving to DPW.
Easy forget. Sorry. Our blacktoppy's done, all our streets got paved. We know there's quite some concern. A lot of people were very upset that we did it the first day of school, but once again, it was scheduled a month or so prior, but because of the rain, they get pushed back and that was the only day, that was the day they were offering us. We're thrilled to get it because we could have been another two months after that. It went really well. We really didn't have a lot of trouble. Up in Cantwood was the worst of it and they're on the backside when school went in and when they came back, they got all the buses down. So, I really don't think they had too much trouble, but all the roads got done, they cleaned up, they look great. And that's over with. The playgrounds, community park, we just had to blacktop the parking lot there. That looks great down there. That's wrapped up and done. The Warner Ave project, they blacktopped it today. Looks great down there. The contractor did a fantastic job. Greg told me tonight, Greg, engineer Greg, told me that they may be even a little under budget. But he came in, cleared that out from Anita Street to Elizabeth Street, got the cover in. It just, that area just looks fantastic. It was just overgrown, there were huge trees in there. We couldn't get them out and now we'll see the next storm. The water's actually lower now, so that just, that worked out really well and we're happy the way that worked out. They really thrilled the contractor, too. We didn't know the contractor, he wasn't from the area, never heard of him before and he worked out. It was an excellent job. Paper Mill Island, the last concert they had, the porta potties were left there for a week. They weren't supposed to be, they were left there. They weren't clean. It's something I think we will need to address at a former time when they did come and pick them up, they did a lot of damage out there, they backed through the fence, they pulled one of the benches out, they hit one of the garbage cans and we had the police over there and the gentleman who owned the company was not cooperative at all, didn't want to admit to anything. But Lieutenant Lockwood and I'm not sure who the, I'm not sure who the new one was.
Officer Surratt.
Yep, they went over there and they tracked them down and they, I think a couple of days had to go to their company and find them and finally they said, oh yeah, we did it. So, hats off to the police for going after them because there was quite a bit of damage. I mean, they backed right through the fence and we had to go over and replace everything.
Could I, yeah Chuck, the DPW committee has recommended that we hold the promoter's security deposit until that issue's resolved by the poor John company.
Okay, perfect, yep.
Just so the village office knows.
I think, and Mike might be able to answer this, I think now it's all going to be the insurance for the vehicle, I'm not sure. Would you know that, Mike, or no? Say that again, Chuck. I think now, will all that come back to the owner's insurance for the vehicle or how will that work?
I would assume so.
Okay, so what are we looking into?
The poor John people, they're contracted by
Correct.
our contractor and he's ultimately responsible for whatever. So, we should hold them. In my opinion, we should, our committee thinks we should hold the
Okay.
security deposit until it's resolved.
Yep.
Certainly, the board's purview.
We've got a sewer main breakdown on water and metal. They're going to be addressing that tomorrow. That should be, hopefully that'll be done tomorrow. And Mr. Mayor, the stoplight issue, we talked about it in committee, we've talked to the attorney a little bit about it, we need to get a little more information and we're going to do a little more research, I think, before we make a decision on what we want to do. What we're talking about is the light on Downer Street, it's a private light and the private light is out and who's going to repair it or where we are with that. But we want to get a little more information and get back to Bob with it and maybe we can have an outcome with that. So, other than that, I'm good.
Thanks, Chuck.
Codes office.
I can update the public that there is a public hearing at our next planning board meeting for the proposed apartments at 104 Smokey Hollow Road. That's up by St. Mary's Apartments. Christopher Community is proposing a 52-unit, two-story building, multifamily on the property and they are having a public hearing. So, if you would like to come and see what's happening with the property, speak for or against the proposal, you can do that. Plans are available here at the codes office and we'll be glad to get you information, information on it.
Do you have a date?
A date and time.
Sorry, the date of the public hearing is September 27th at 7:00 PM here at Village Hall. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing else. Was there anything else?
Chuck talked about.
Yeah, Chuck talked about the light. Right. So, we're good.
I'll just add my two cents regarding the traffic light on Downer Street. I think it should be taken out from a public safety point of view. It's created significant issues. By rights, all traffic is supposed to stop at a malfunctioning traffic light. We're not enforcing that because Downer Street would be a mess if we did. And I just don't have the staff quit, frankly, to enforce such a thing. So, Chuck put up the temporary stop signs, but we certainly need to address that issue. And every time the sign breaks down, it creates a public safety issue and the owners are, difficult to get in touch with and is Chuck illuminated. So, I think, in my opinion, the best solution is just to get rid of that light. The light's in the wrong place anyway. I think any traffic study would show that if there was a light that should be there should be at next road, not at that location. We all know why the light's there, right, wrong, or different. It's been there for a long time. So, if the people there don't want it anymore, I think we should acquiesce to that request and let them take it out. Chuck, any, your thoughts?
Yep, we're just, we're trying to get a little more information so we can see what our options are legally, so that's, but I agree.
But if they want to take it out, why would we stop them from taking it out? Because, yeah, we can hold their feet to the fire and tell them to fix it if it's seen some minutes of a planning board or village board meeting. But every time the light malfunctions, which seems to be much more regularly because they're not paying to update it, they're not paying to keep it serviced, it's creating public safety issues.
Right now, there's just a question of what authority we have. We're trying to work through that. So, I can talk to you later about it if you like.
Sure. I guess my question is, the email I saw is they'd like the light to be gone.
Are they willing to take care of that expense?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I think that's part of what?
That's, yeah.
Or are you looking?
Are they willing to pay for it to go away?
We don't know. Don't know.
Okay.
We wouldn't force them to put it back.
No, I wouldn't.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Then, moving on to pending business.
Mark Baker's on now.
Is he?
No.
Oh, he's way up there. Mark, when you're not sitting, it's hard to tell.
All I could think of was that there was a modified agenda that went out and, you know, you guys were going to take action in the pending business and stuff. I just have one thing, and I, speaking of modified agenda, I want to be sure that it's on the agenda to address the budget modifications that I sent all of you with your reports this month.
Yes.
If it's not, I would ask one of the trustees to add it to the agenda.
Item D is a motion to approve proposed budget modifications by the finance committee.
Okay, that's great, thank you. I didn't get the modified agenda, so
Okay.
other than that, I'll stick, I'll stick to the modified agenda.
Thank you. Sorry I missed you.
No, my gosh, it's fine.
Now, moving on to pending business. Discussion, possible action, approving proposed local law to amend section 324-14 of the village code to reduce the speed limit on River Street from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I will discuss.
Got it.
It would behoove the safety of that street if the individuals living on it would not park on the street.
Amen.
Regardless of what the speed is posted. Certainly make it safer for those people who are walking on the sidewalk. But, that said, the speed limit change is fine with me. Is there any, anyone else having a discussion they'd like to add? All in favor of the change?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Moving on to new business. I'll back you up. At what point between Mike and Chuck, do you think we will see the 25 mile an hour signs, whatever, get changed?
We just have to order, if the board says we'll have to order signs.
Okay. I don't think there's any signs on it right now, honestly.
Do we need a sign then? If there's not?
Well, if they've lowered it to 25, we'll need signs on.
I think a sign would be helpful.
Well, we'll have to order, book order signs.
Yeah, I'm just also wondering if it's one-way, and I don't remember, I'm nervous.
Oh, right, only one sign. Only one sign that was one-way. I forgot that.
Yeah, if you've got those signs that you see on the thruway, for example, do not enter wrong way.
We have that on the other end now, yeah.
Yeah.
It's heavily signed on the other side. Unfortunately, there's people that don't pay attention to it occasionally.
You want to just put, I don't know, just put like 25 mile an hour underneath it, just say one-way street? Just a?
Well, well, anyone going, going west, they're going to know it's a one-way street. It's the people that come down North Street, head south on North Street and then end up going east.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying like somebody goes to a house at that establishment and then they don't know that it's a one-way street coming from the cottage restaurant. They go down there, they hang out at somebody's house right there, then they back out of the driveway and they go back towards the cottage restaurant just because they don't have the information going on that side of the, of the street, knowing that it's a one-way street, obviously the other way.
I think it does.
I don't know, I just, I know, I know they got the two signs right next to Gates's house. I know that, but.
I'm almost certain there's a one-way sign just past where the Female Charitable Society is.
Okay, all right, well, then that was covered. I'm just making sure.
There's so many signs, I'd have to actually drive it myself. Chuck and I can take a look at it and we could determine what's appropriate. I would certainly echo trustee Studdings' comment about the residents who park on that street. It's no parking on that street.
Yeah.
They do it every day. Is it something that we generally issue tickets for? No, because the people live there. But, I mean, we could certainly put some warning tickets on there and, you know, it's a unique street in the sense that the sidewalk has no curb to it for a number of reasons, all of which are legitimate. Maybe, but I mean, there's, it's a unique street where people will say, oh, they're driving on the sidewalk. That's because you probably can't tell us the sidewalk, what isn't, especially if you're not used to being on that street, to your point. So, Chuck and I could take a look at it and try and figure out if there's something more we can do. I did have Officer Natale survey that area about six weeks ago. She felt the signage on North Street was more than adequate
Right, okay.
to prevent people from traveling the wrong way. I don't know what more we can do there.
I wonder if there's, oh, I know before the entrance to Mercer Park got redeveloped, I know there was a, you could have potentially come out of Mercer Park and never see the signs because of where the signs were located, but I, I think that's been corrected. But I wonder if there's anything we can do at, as people are exiting Mercer Park to remind them that they can't turn right there.
We could see if we could put up a left turn only sign.
You'd go left or straight, they just can't go right.
We could put no right turn, yeah, we could do that. Maybe a right turn with a slash in it. Again, I'd circle back to, you got a doggy leg parkway, it's got a lot of signs.
Yeah.
Trucks go through that, it seems like four times a year.
Right, yeah.
Hit that bridge.
Yep.
I think it's a challenge now for people to try to see if they can do that thing.
I think, I think we literally have, I mean, I also, I mean, the mayor's familiar with the situation where we had the July 4th fireworks and I was at your station down there. We had barricades set up and a woman went through the barricades down River Street where people in the middle of the street and I ran down the street yelling at her. I got up to the car and she's like, why are you yelling at me? I have a young child in the car, like, that's a 10-year-old kid. I said, because you're going to kill someone, you're going the wrong way. And she's like, well, you're yelling at me, this is unprofessional. And I said, well, the mayor's right down there, you go file a complaint. In the meantime, you know, you, yeah, so I mean, even the, even barricade setup did not dissuade this woman from going the wrong way down, down River Street. So, you know, Chuck and I'll take a look at it, we'll see what we can come up with. Yeah, we put up a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign. The nature of that street, you know, I was just talking to Sergeant Gwynn and I told him that it's going to get reduced and he said, you know, he goes, I was meeting with the people over there, he said, you know, 30, even a 25. I said, no, it's, it's such a street that, you know, yeah, you know, the people go 10 miles an hour on there. You know, certainly when I drive down there, I go about 10 because
Yeah.
that's about the speed I feel safe traversing that street, it's so narrow. The driveways, there's maybe spot for one vehicle, sometimes two, depending as to where you are on that street for those folks to park there. It's.
There's a lot of signs there now on that street.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the world's getting to, you know, we want to be judicious because if you got too many signs, then they don't be filed. So, we'll come up with something that we think is appropriate, as it can be, for the location there. Fair enough? Chuck, anything further?
No, we're good.
Yeah, we'll work together on that.
We voted, right?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Moving on to new business. Could I have a motion to accept the resignation of acting justice Timothy McMahon effective Thursday, September 15th, 2022?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just comment that Judge McMahon has served in the village for many years. Is as normal as a police chief. I was, didn't agree with every decision the man made, which I think is normal for a police chief and a judge, but certainly he provided a great benefit to the village for a lot of years and I would just ask this board to thank him for his service to the village during that time period.
Certainly, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? And like the chief said, we do thank ex-justice Timothy McMahon for his years of service to the village. He gets, the acting justice often gets some of those late night calls, right?
Well, you know, not anymore because now we do centralized arraignment downtown, but, you know, he used to come in at 2:00, I was just going to count, and he'd come in at 2:00 in the morning and do an arraignment and things along those lines. So, you know, it was kind of a sight unseen, somewhat thankless job, but I know even as acting justice, he would preside over evictions or small claims type of things, not necessarily the criminal stuff that Judge Heeling handles. Those were his purview. So, you know, he certainly did a lot of things for, for the village over the years and, you know, just, it's been at least a decade, if not longer, that he served the village. So.
Excellent. Item B, a motion to appoint Teresa Hugel. I hope that's how you say it?
Yes, sir.
To the position of acting justice effective Friday, September 16th, 2022, at a recommended annual salary of $4,000.
Moved.
Second. What do we do? If we just got rid of Tim, we need her tonight.
Yeah, we wish her, everybody knows, she's very active at Canton Woods. Teresa Hugel is on board over there and represents the center at times and she's great to work with, very nice personality, I think she'll be a great addition to our court.
And just so this board's aware, trustee Studdings just made a comment, the local justices no longer do arraignments. So, now if we apprehend an individual on a warrant or has to, under arrest, that has to be arraigned, that individual goes and is held at the justice center until the centralized arraignment court downtown does the arraignments.
Okay.
So, that's how that process works now. We're not waking up Judge Heeling or Judge McMahon or now, now our new acting justice for those types of arraignments. That's all done at the centralized arraignments on a countywide basis.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's passed. Here none, it's passed. Item C, motion to declare a Fellow's P58CS paper shredder as surplus. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we discuss it?
Yeah, I think if I move it past
I can tell you it's dead.
I'm just going to ask what's coming, what's coming, now I know.
Okay, we voted, right?
Yes.
Well said. Okay, motion to approve the proposed budget modifications recommended by the finance committee. Everyone should have received the packet as proposed by our treasurer. Can I have a motion?
I like a motion.
I'll second it and then I'd like, I don't know if the treasurer would like to discuss those particular modifications or not.
I, I just have a couple of points I want the board to, I want to be sure the board votes. Is, is there a motion, the second?
Yeah, we're set, we're ready for you.
Okay, the first one is that on proposal one, I, I want to be sure that you understand that I'm, I'm proposing that that comes from the contingency budget that we set off. So, you know, it's kind of semantics, but rather than post that to, to the contingency, I'm saying reduce the contingency, have this line item created and then this event invoice that you should all be aware of went against that. And I don't know if the contingency is going to get used for something else during the year, but I think if there's a settlement that's on the horizon, labor settlement that's on the horizon, that could be what we have to use that for, so just wanted you to be aware of that. The second thing is, and you can come back to it and the chief can talk to you about the salary and overtime in the police department if you have questions about that. Third thing is no issue and the fourth thing, hydrants, was a DPW request and it was between the water fund and ARBA and frankly, the, a lot of the projects at the DPW are still kind of circling for a landing and we don't know what they're going to, what the eventual cost might be, so I kind of didn't want to put another thing on ARBA right away and the water fund has probably, I don't know, unrestricted funds of, of probably close to $800,000 and I, and I thought, what are we, what are we saving it for? Not that we shouldn't be saving it, but this is a legitimate water fund expense and I thought it was best positioned there.
Mark, while we're doing this?
Mm-hmm.
We told Chuck to buy water meters.
Oh, it
Should we add that to this?
Well, in, in addition to these hydrant shut offs?
Yeah, because I don't think the water meters, the 200 water meters are in the budget either.
Okay, what are we talking about there, dollar wise?
$52,000.
$52,000 exactly? It's $52,000 and something.
$400.
Yeah, $52,400.
$400, yeah.
Again, I think that's a water fund expense, I would, I would tell, I would tell you to, to add it to these proposals and we can take it out of the water fund and buy water meters, I mean, you got to do on, Chuck, if I remember right, you told me that there's like a, a definite reason that we're replacing those, it's not just because we don't have anything else to do.
No, no, they're just, we're, we're doing the whole system and
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I said, no, we're doing the whole system, the, the meters are old and
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, we're upgrading them and we're upgrading them so they don't have to go read them anymore, you can just, they're automatically reading, drive by.
So, so that's like a legit
Yes.
You know, life of the equipment replacement, water fund expense, I would, I would tell you to take it from the water fund.
Okay, but should we add that to the modifications we're approving tonight or you want to do that next go around?
When's he going to buy them?
He'll buy them as soon as we let him.
Tomorrow.
Thanks, Mark.
I would do, I would, I would do it tonight, I would add it to this, it's just a, can add it to the $45,000, we'll say that's 45 for the hydrants and 52 for the water meters.
And the, the problem they're having with the meters is just like everything else, we're not going to be able to buy them all because they can't get them to us, so we just want to get what they can because it's a, it's a supply chain thing and they just, they can't get them, so they're going to get what they can and hopefully as we put them in, we'll have the order in there and keep going.
Okay.
Okay, did we, we had a motion to do that, can we amend the, the modifications to include $52,400 for water meters in addition to the other modifications? Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Jody, is that up? You got that?
I got it.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thanks, Mark.
Go for it, Chuck.
Thank you all. Thanks, Mark.
Item E, a motion to authorize, and Megan will go through it all again.
So it's a motion authorizing the deputy mayor and the chief of police to sign letters of support for the New York State Liquor Authority to issue a waiver of the liquor license requirement for Paper Mill Island to allow more than four events at that venue within the 202022 year, which will allow the Taste of Bolinsville event to serve alcohol on Saturday, September 17th.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll third it.
So just for clarification, this board already approved the open container waiver. Apparently, New York State Liquor Authority has a, has a requirement that only four licenses will be, four waivers will be established for a particular venue over the course of a year. I know we've had multiple events in the past, but irregardless, that's what the Taste of Bolinsville Chamber is being advised of, so they indicated that the ABC board would waive this requirement if, if the village board and the police chief provided them letters of support, so that's what this is. I penned those letters and they will be signed by the deputy mayor and myself, provided this board authorizes.
Same.
Quick point of discussion, do we need to change the language on the resolution? Because we've had more than four events per se, but how do we word that?
No, it needs to be exactly the way
That's fine, okay.
Yes. It's just that it's okay for there to be more, more than four events at that venue.
The letter states, the, the letter states that we're supporting the New York State Liquor Authority to issue a waiver, that's what the letter states.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. I guess we're not going to do any executive sessions tonight, so could I have a motion to pay bills as audit here?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:08?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carry.